Okay, we are gathered for the regular board meeting of the Samatillo County Board of Supervisors for our Tuesday, June 21st, 2016 meeting. Will you all rise and join me in the salute to the flag?
My pleasure. With the wings to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
So I'm going to ask that we have a moment of silence for the people of Orlando and the victims. And as you all know, early on the morning of Sunday, June 13th, 49 residents of Orlando lost their lives. Fifty-three were wounded. Many are still recovering. They ranged in age from 18 to 50, many young lives with their lives fully ahead of them. They were baristas, bartenders, accountants, recent high school graduates, travel planners, sales. They were, in short, from all walks of life in the community. Many were from the LGBT community and many were of Hispanic background. And we join with the city of Orlando and we are Orlando Strong. Thank you. Would encourage you, after the board meeting or on your way out, that there are photographs and comments out in the lobby that you probably saw when you came in. I took the time this morning to go out there and look at the photographs and read the comments. And if you haven't had a chance to do that, I would encourage you to stop by. We're going to move these flowers right now, I believe, because I guess it interferes with the camera, I'm not sure, but we're going to move these flowers out to the lobby. And each of the supervisors was given a pin this morning, which should be in front of you. And thank you to the folks that provided the pin. Marcy, thank you. And with that, we'll move on to roll call, if we could.
Thank you, Supervisor Pine.
Here.
Supervisor Groom.
Present.
Supervisor Horsley.
Here.
Supervisor Ticia.
Here.
President Slocum.
Here. We move on now to public comment, which is reserved for matters not otherwise on the agenda or listed on the consent agenda. I have one speaker card. If you did want to speak, there are speaker cards in the back. First and only speaker is Mr. Martin Fox.
Good morning, President Slocum, members of the board, my fellow veteran, Mr. Maloffy, and county council, Mr. Byers, as well as Budget Director Sacco. Please help the persons and family members of persons living with serious mental illness who lack the capacity to seek treatment voluntarily and who are already known by the health system to have a need for treatment. Like the 239 mentally ill persons who did not connect with community services, the Measure A committee reported were released under the early review of Mentally Ill People in Jail Program on February 23rd to get access to LoR's Law services now without further delay. LoR's Law helps persons living with serious mental illness who do not believe they are sick and their family members because it incentivizes treatment compliance but without requiring the person to become dangerous before making treatment available. LoR's Law is a civil legal proceeding that provides effective, efficient, and economical mental health treatment which may be initiated by family members and friends. It avoids the tragic consequences experienced by the families of Errol Chang and Yonero Serrano imposed by the intellectually and morally bankrupt policies deceptively attributed to the Lantropian Petrus Short Act shortcomings. The members of the Measure A Oversight Committee deserve our thanks for documenting yet another failure of the intellectually and morally bankrupt voluntarily treatment-only policies and procedures that continue to make death like the deaths of Errol Chang and Yonero Serrano the only permanent escape route out of the revolving door of hospitalization and incarceration now inhabited by 239 people that Measure A Committee reported on. Please have mercy on the persons of living with mental illness who lack the capacity to seek treatment voluntarily and who the health system already knows have a need for treatment like these 239 mentally ill persons who were released from jail and their families by directing the aggressive implementation of LoR's Law now without any further delay. Thank you.
We need to take an action now to set the agenda.
I'll move to set the agenda and include the consent agenda items.
All is in favor?
And this is also to approve the consent agenda, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Are we okay?
Yes.
Okay. We'll move now to matters set for a specified time. The first item, nine o'clock resolution approving the FY 2016-17 recommended budget submitted by the county manager. Mr. Maloffy.
Mr. President, members of the board, this is the time that you have set forth to consider the second year of the two-year budget that you adopted last year. State law requires that although the board approves a two-year budget, that every year it must approve a separate budget. So this budget reflects both the changes that were made during the course of the current fiscal year to the budget as well as recommended changes to the budget that will be voted on by the board today. So the action that we are recommending that you take is to adopt the budget for 2016-17 and to make the changes that are requested in this particular document. As you can see, the recommended budget for 2016-17 now is approximately $220 million or 9.2% higher than the budget that was adopted in September. This is largely due to increases in capital improvement spending, other infrastructure spending, as well as Measure A commitments that the board has made to date. It also is reflecting the addition of approximately 20 positions, 19 of which are in the general fund, which raises the total position count for the county to 5,438, which is still approximately 600 to 700 positions fewer than we had in 2008. The general fund for 2016-17 is approximately $107 million more than the budget adopted in September. This represents about a 7% change. Among the significant changes are as follows. In criminal justice, the budget for next year reflects about a $4.4 million reduction, which reflects the refunding for the youth services center that was approved by the board last year, and changes to the retirement system for deputy sheriffs and safety personnel representing a reduction in salary and benefit costs to these accounts. In terms of health services, there is a reduction of about $3.9 million, reflecting the reduction in the Children's Health Initiative as a result of state funding that has now replaced county funding in that program. So the program has not been reduced, just the change in the method of funding, as well as reflecting the wind down in the public administrator's office and correcting the accounts that were in error over the last few years. As the board knows, there was considerable legal and other expenditures involved in that. There are just very few accounts left remaining, and so there are virtually no expenses left to incur in that regard. There are some significant increases, obviously, in community service, again reflecting the rollover of capital funds as well as additional housing funds that the board has made available for affordable housing. And in administration and fiscal services, again reflecting additional capital funding as well as changes in retiree health and increasing the pay-down contributions of the general fund for the retirement system. As we've discussed in previous budgets and elsewhere, the road fund continues to be of some concern to the county. As the board is aware, the primary source of expenditures in the road fund are gas taxes. Gas taxes have remained relatively flat for many, many years now since they are paid on a per gallon basis. It's a reflection of the fact that there are much better mileage obtained today in vehicles, and so the relative amount of gas that is being expended remains relatively flat. However, the cost of operating the road fund, primarily in terms of the maintenance of the roadways, continues to increase at a significant rate and thereby causing a deficit in terms of future expenditures in the road fund. So this chart reflects the fact that although we are maintaining roads today at a slightly less-than-optimal standard, as we continue to spend down the reserves in the road fund over the next several years, we are looking at the potential of our roads being considerably less well-maintained in the future, and that will accelerate if we continue to have one-off projects in the road fund that continue to deflate the reserves. So my message to the board there is we really need caution in how we expend road fund money. Otherwise, we're going to be really faced with a situation in four or five years in which there are no reserves, in which there is a growing deficit in the condition of our existing payments, and the cost then of bringing those roads back up to current standards is going to get ever greater as we have less and less money to put into the maintenance of the road funds. In a later portion of our presentation this morning, Mr. Porter is going to be talking about capital improvements, and I'm sure he could answer any questions you have with respect to the condition of our roads and the road fund. With respect to reserves and contingencies, you'll note that, again, largely due to capital projects, Measure A, and increasing our contribution to the retirement system, we have spent down the general fund reserves from a high point in 2009 of approximately $238 million to about $154 million today. That still is within the board's reserve policy, but it is of concern as we look to the future and the increasing likelihood, I believe, of a recession on the horizon in the next two years. I would certainly like to see this fund up to around $200 million in the next two years to prepare for whatever economic uncertainties we face in the future. So the message I want to leave with the board is to really be prudent in terms of how we make revisions to the budgets going forward and to do so only if we can identify new sources of revenue, not otherwise anticipated, or if we can save money by transferring funds from one particular project or one particular program to another and thereby fund new projects. Simply increasing the budget at this point will stress our reserves even further. And at this point, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Mr. Sacco, and he'll take you through the details of the remainder of it.
Thanks.
Mr. Sacco, before you start, there's a question.
Yes. John, I just had a quick question. On fiscal year 2017, it shows that the ERAF reserves are, I won't say half of what they were in 2016. Is that the difference in the money we spend on capital programs, or are we just getting less?
No. As the board recalls, that we basically budget for half of the ERAF reserves that we know we're going to get during the year, although historically we get the full amount. So the budgeted amount is only half, but when you look at the previous years, and frankly, going forward, looking at the future years, it's more certain than not that we'll get the full amount. But there's always that one year that there's that anomaly where it appears to be less. In reality, we believe we'll get the same amount going forward.
So at the end of the day, will our general fund reserves or our total reserves would be up if we looked at it next year?
It would be up probably by another $30 to $40 million, but still under that $200 million mark that I talked about.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Pine, did you have a question?
No, I just think that, I think that's a good point about how we deal with the, you know, we keep half that ERAF aside.
Hey, Mr. Sacco.
Thank you. On this next slide, we essentially, so you'll see the $61.8 million in the right-hand corner. This basically explains the drop in reserves, and we've broken it out into four segments. One is ongoing items, county loans, short-term items, and one-time items. So the preliminary budget, the 2016-17 budget that the board technically adopted or didn't really adopt, but they received in September of last year, had, you know, there was already a $30.4 million drop in reserves, and the primary reason for that was the debt service kicks in for Maple Street, and that's $25.8 million of that. And actually, I'm going to be going through some slides explaining more of these changes. The one point I do want to make on this is that the ongoing piece is $27.1 million, and that does include one short-term item. We did it as a net county cost adjustment, but it was the sunny day trials. So it's $3 million for the private defender one time, and then we've added two agile positions or term positions, DA positions, to prosecute those defendants, or, you know, because the, I guess, something has changed in the way they're going to try those cases, and there's going to be more trials than they initially anticipated. So they think that the trials are going to last up to three years. Sunny day, if I didn't say. Did I say sunny day? So here's the net county cost adjustments. So starting again with the preliminary budget, the net county cost increases were $22.9 million. But then in 2016-17, we had some reductions due to retirement, and also the health benefits, the health benefits weren't as high as we thought they'd be. Excuse me, I think I need a glass of water. Yeah, maybe John can take over. Kind of sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
So in terms of the ongoing adjustments, Mr. Sacco gets his voice back. Going through the list, I think probably the most significant items are, again, the Maple Street debt service, which we're picking up for the first time. But remember that the way that it has been structured is that we've front-loaded the cost of debt service. So we will begin to see in future years some significant reductions to the debt service for the county. The LoR's Law pilot program, which is scheduled to begin in the near future, sunny day trials, Mr. Sacco mentioned, the health and mental health pods that we have been adding as part of our increased mental health services, the commuter bus program, which we have gone out to bid for the service to provide bus service from concentrations of where employees live in the East Bay and in the North County to the Samatillo County Medical Center complex and to the County Government Center complex in Redwood City. Jim, go ahead and finish that.
So here are some, so these net county cost adjustments, which totaled $45.2 million, are then offset by other things. So there's general purpose revenue adjustments of $20.3 million. So that's primarily reflects the 5% increase in the property tax increases and also some adjustments to sales tax. There's the removal, we talked about earlier, of the Children's Health Initiative. So those net county cost adjustments of $45 million are offset with a reduction or essentially reduced because of these revenue increases of $20.3 and the elimination of the Children's Health Initiative contribution. The other ones, the pension payment contribution of $14.1 million, that one is really kind of, and I mentioned this in the board memo, it's kind of growing a little faster than we anticipated. And the reason is--
I'll check your notes.
Oh, that's okay. The reason is really related to the way that we did this was that as, to keep that blended rate at 38%, as the rates dropped, county departments would see drops, and we'd make the contribution out of non-departmental, and it'd be a wash. Well, unfortunately, it's not really working out as a wash because salary increases are causing the differential to be different than what I anticipated. So we're going to take a look at that. We're going to work with retirement. We're still going to try to work out a plan to where we can get it paid off by 2023, but we may have to adjust the current structure a little bit. Retiree health, there's actually something on the consent agenda today for $3.8 million. Calpers actually had losses last year of 0.3%, and the assumed rate of return was 6.8%, so they fell short of their target by 7.1%. So that essentially created a $4 million increase in the retiree health contribution this year. And then every year, just based on actuarial calculations, they anticipate it would increase another $700,000, you know, in the out years, assuming everything else remains equal. So we're asking for $4.6 million in additional money for retiree health next year. There's two loans with Half Moon Bay and Brisbane. These both have longer-term paybacks. I believe Half Moon Bay is $6 million, Brisbane is $1.7 million. Peninsula Clean Energy is, again, two components. There's a $6 million collateral loan, which will be, I think the board will get these loan documents next week. The $6 million will be paid back in two years. The $1.5 million will be paid back over, that's an operating loan. It's actually part of a larger $2.98 million loan, but some of it's already been appropriated. But that $2.98 million loan will be paid back over five years. And then the county airports loan is another long-term loan that will be paid back from hangar fee rentals. Enhanced flood control zone is $2 million for three years. So this is the new countywide zone. And so that's $2 million for 2016-17, 17, 18, 18, 19, for a total of $6 million over three years. We also appropriated climate resiliency, sea level rise of $580,000, and affordable housing task force for $500,000. I do want to ask the board's request on one issue. We had, the board had approved an ATR a couple of, in the last month or so, for $1.9 million to purchase the 3,060 to 3,080 Middlefield Road properties. Those are the addresses. And it turns out that a close will not happen by June 30. So we want to add $1.9 million to the budget that we presented to the board so that we can reappropriate that money in 2016-17. And once real property closes the deal, the money will be available. Otherwise, we wouldn't have the funding until September. So that's a request we'll make when you finally make the motion to approve.
Supervisor Ticia has a question.
Just a quick question, Jim. Maybe I didn't understand this correctly. I thought the loans for the libraries were coming out of Measure A, not our, you know, so that therefore we wouldn't really be spending down on our reserves or coming out of the general fund, which means we wouldn't be using that money for other things until those loans came back in, but is that?
My understanding was that we had, the board approved $2.5 million and maybe another $500,000, I'm not sure of the exact amount, for loans to city libraries.
I'm sorry, I'm talking about the Half Moon Bay library loan and the Brisbane library.
Yeah, yeah, these two, I believe, were done out. I know that the Half Moon Bay, we contributed $12 million towards the project, and then this additional loan was from the general fund. That's the way it was appropriated.
I just thought, I think, I guess I was thinking, because when I was talking about the Brisbane library loan, I was thinking it would come out of Measure A money. I didn't want it to come out of general fund money because, you know, that's kind of money for gaps in services, but it would get paid back through Measure A. So I, you know--
We can--
I think Mr. Sacco is correct that the actual discussion with the board was that our share of the library costs, the county's share, was from Measure A, but the loan was from the general fund. Now, at the end of the day, Measure A is general fund money, so it's taking money out of one pocket and putting it into another. But that was our understanding of the direction of the board at that meeting.
Okay, that's fine. I realize it's all general fund, but, you know, when we have Measure A, we're trying to keep it within a certain--
Right.
--range, and if we use that for that, then you don't use it for something else. It gets mixed in as general fund, then it's, you know, it's kind of just keeps draining and draining and draining.
Right.
I'm trying to figure out how we stop the drain.
So here are the next three slides of the Measure A initiatives, just to recap. There's $161 million, well, actually, $162 million appropriated this year. $104.5 million was in the preliminary budget. There's $12.4 million in new items, and I'll go over those. There's $44.3 million in rollover. And then also, it's kind of a funny thing with the budget, but the library also has rollover of about $800,000. And so they're not part of the county budget, per se, but they do get Measure A money. So if you're looking at the county budget, the Measure A that's appropriated is $161.2 million, but if you're looking at the total Measure A allocations, it's $162 million because of that small piece that's going to the county library. On here, so some of the one-time items were $215,000 is the first one, and that's for Star Vista Daybreak Program. The next item, the $350,000, is budgeted in HSA for legal aid services for vulnerable populations. The $800,000 for parks is for the renovation of Sanchez Adobe Historical Site in Pacifica. There's $75,000--
Jim, they're not tracking this list that you have showing.
Oh, I'm just going down the new items.
Do we have it in here?
Oh, it's--
Here it is, here it is. I think it's--
Oh, maybe you don't have this slide.
Yeah, I don't--
Well, if you look at the slide on your screen, you see the $215,000.
It's here.
So the $215,000 is the Star Vista Daybreak Program.
Got it.
Yeah. And the $350,000, which is second among the Measure A items, is the legal aid services for vulnerable populations. That's budgeted in HSA. There is $800,000 in parks projects, and that is for Sanchez Adobe renovations. The $75,000 is for active and alternative transportation for a term position to help administer that program. We go to the next slide, you'll see $400,000 in county facilities infrastructure, and that's for CSA 11 Pescadero Water Source Study. And then there's a few items in this $10.5 million. So the big one in the county committee development for the new projects is the Housing Preservation Fund, $10 million in new money. There's also $0.5 million for Farm Labor Housing Initiative, and $20,000 for outreach related to the county's mobile home park rent control law ordinance. So that explains the $12.4 million. Again, there's significant rollovers-- rollovers of forty-four point three million and some of the things, big ones are eleven point nine million for Big Lift and again, almost twenty-five million dollars for capital. And then there's the eight hundred and eleven thousand for the libraries. So with that, we have some slides on capital projects, and I'm going to turn it over to Jim Porter and bring him the clicker.
Thank you, Mr. Sacco. Members of the board, I'd like to give you an update on some of the major capital projects that we'll be working on over the next fiscal year. The Alpine Trail Bike and Pedestrian Improvement Project is the project to replace the existing trail on Alpine Road and install three retaining walls along the road to hold that road up. The design on that is, is primarily complete. We're awaiting permits from the regulatory agencies. That's the Corps of Engineers, State Fish and Wildlife, Federal Fish and Wildlife, National Marine Fisheries Service, as well as Caltrans. We need to get access off of one-on-one on that project. Based upon the timing, since we don't have permits yet, we will not be able to make this construction season for these repairs. So we will hold the road up over the winter and hopefully by then the permitting agencies will have approved our permits. Marotta Road Erosion Protection, this is Marotta Road on the coast side in Miramar. This project is to install sheet pile wall below ground along the right-of-way line, along the edge of the roadway to protect the road from coastal erosion as it occurs. So we're taking a proactive approach to making sure that that roadway remains stable into the future. As you probably know, last winter we had a collapse on the southern portion of the slope near the pedestrian walkway. We went in and put in erosion protection. We're going to be doing some soil nailing in that area to hold up the wall. But in addition, we're doing this project for two point six million to hold up the rest of the road. Pine Street Warehouse Replacement is a project that we're working on with Environmental Health to replace their warehouse in Redwood City. They have part of their Household Hazardous Waste Program there. So that will essentially replace that building. The Green Valley Trail Project is immediately south of Devil's Slide. This is a parks project where they're going to pioneer a new trail from Devil's Slide down to Gray Whale Cove. They are ninety percent, they're at ninety percent plans and specs on that project. So you should see the Parks Department come with permission to advertise in the very near future. The Corolla East Mental Health Facility Replacement Project is moving forward. We went out for requests for qualifications. We received six packets from contractors and architect teams from both California and others from outside of the state. We've shortlisted, or we will be shortlisting that down to three. And we're right now working collaboratively with the health system. The health system is working with the state to look at the funding issues that occur with operation of the facility. So once that is clarified, we'll be able to proceed with the design on that. The Public Safety Dispatch and EOC Project, fondly known as The Rock, should start any day now. We were told by our contractor he's going to be there tomorrow. We're keeping our fingers crossed. Just so you know, that project will still be on schedule as long as they start by August. This is what we call a float period in the project, but they're still on schedule to complete by October twenty seventeen. The County Government Center Master Plan Projects are moving forward. That project is being done by Ms. Deborah Bazan, excuse me, Deborah Bazan is working on that project with us. This project is tied with the San Mateo Medical Center Campus Master Plan, along with the Tower Road Campus Master Plan, and now a North County Health Center Master Plan. On the Government Center, this project, we're really looking at essentially three things. One is the size of a new parking structure that'll go on the north side of the campus. The other thing that we're looking at is potentially a new county office, Building Three. As I said, the decision on whether to proceed with that county office, Building Three, is tied intimately with what happens at the San Mateo Medical Center in terms of whether any of the functions that are there can be moved over here. And by functions, I mean administrative type functions, not the provision of healthcare. Also in that plan, we've talked quite a bit about county office, Building One. We'll be getting another opinion from an architect on whether it makes sense to replace that building or retrofit it, excuse me, yeah, replace or retrofit. So that project's moving along. We expect completion of that work in August. And we have a subcommittee of supervisors, Slocum and Horsley, that are working with us on that project. The Animal Care Shelter is moving forward. We began with three proposers, three design build firms. One dropped out, we're down to two. We have had two confidential meetings with each of those proposers. We will now be at a proposal submittal process, which should occur within the next four weeks. We'll be asking the DBE firms to provide their proposal to us at that. And based on that, we will make a selection and present that to your board with a recommendation. Pescadero Fire Station Replacement Project, we are working with a community group out on the coast side to determine where that station will go. Three of the locations are within tsunami inundation zones. The fourth location is at Pescadero High School. There have been active or mapped seismic fault lines by the high school. We've currently engaged the geotechnical engineer to do a study of those faults. Once we get that information, we'll be able to provide a recommendation to the committee on what the ideal site will be. This is an extremely complicated project in that there will need to be a countywide vote to approve a site for this project. So this will take some time to complete.
Could you elaborate on that?
I, I would, it would be best if Martha Poyatos from LAFCO could elaborate on that. But it has to do with the, the CSA eleven district that is out there and the, and I really shouldn't go into details that I really don't understand, but I can follow up with you on that. It's, it's quite complex and I'm sure Supervisor Horsley can-
It has to do with an election. In the nineteen eighties, that was called Measure, I think it was Measure A at the time, and it created the urban rural boundary. And to be able to change the boundaries of CSA eleven, you have to go to countywide election. So we, we have found that every single site that we looked at, even the current site, if we wanted to build on it, we would have to go to a countywide election.
And I recall to add to that, there's an issue with zoning as well. None of the zoning out there allows a fire station. So there needs to be a countywide vote to, to update that. So that's Pescadero Fire Station. San Mateo Medical Center, what we call the old hospital building, we affectionately call it the fifty-four building because it was built in nineteen fifty-four. This is the non-seismic structural retrofits. So what this does is basically take the HVAC systems and the piping and ties those down so that when the building shakes, those pipes don't essentially crush and separate and get pulled apart. We will brace those so that the hospital is able to function in their water systems and heating, cooling, and ventilation will work after an earthquake. That project itself is, it's being reviewed by OSHPOD right now. We have plans and specs completed. Once we get feedback from OSHPOD, they're the regulatory agency that oversees medical facilities. We will incorporate their comments and hopefully get a permit, but we expect to begin next fiscal year, hopefully within, by the end of the calendar year. But again, that depends upon the responsiveness of OSHPOD in issuing those permits. The Maple Street Shelter Renovation Project, this morning your board approved plans and specs and authorized us to advertise. So we will be receiving bids soon on that. We'll be awarding that project and starting this fall. The Information Services Department Remodel, that is on the third floor of County Office Building One. We're currently in the process of doing abatement in that area to remove any extraneous asbestos and other materials from that facility. That work will be done in mid-July. After that, the contractor comes in for the tenant improvements. That will be done by the end of the calendar year. Following that, we will furnish that facility and they should be able to move in by February. The Memorial Park Wastewater and Puttable Water System Replacement is half done. The water system has been completed and the next step is to do the wastewater system. So that's the work that will occur next fiscal year. The Strategic Energy Master Plan Project Development, this project is an ongoing annual project that we have to do, energy reduction projects within county facilities. Our next large chunk that we're biting off is lighting retrofits. There are some buildings that have never been retrofitted. So we're going to come in and retrofit all of the lighting systems, go to LEDs, and reduce our energy consumption that way. The final project on this slide is the Respite Center up in San Mateo. We went out with a job order contract bid. The design is all complete on that project. The bid came in higher than our architect's estimate had indicated. So we're going out to competitive bid on that to get a competitive set of bids on that project. That will occur very soon. It'll happen early next fiscal year, next month, in fact. So we'll be going out to bid on that project. Flood Park Improvements, this is actually a very exciting project. The Parks Department has been evaluating a total makeover of Flood Park, which will include renovating the baseball fields, putting in soccer fields, tennis courts, bocce ball, volleyball. It's going to be a major facelift for Flood Park. So that's, that's a very exciting project coming up. Our San Mateo Medical Center Solar Project, that work is substantially complete. However, the contractor has gone bankrupt. We were in a consortium with Alameda County and a few other counties. What we're trying to do is go after their surety company to have them complete the work for us. The final work on this is basically commissioning, which involves making sure that everything works and tying it into the PG&E system. But we can't do anything while this contractor is bankrupt. So we're working with County Council's office to pressure the surety into getting this done. If there's any solace to this, Alameda County has several more projects than we do. So we'll be working closely with Alameda County to resolve this issue. And finally, the Thirty-seventh Avenue ADA Barrier Removal Project. This is a fairly large project, and what this will entail is putting new ADA parking on Thirty-seventh Avenue, as well as a few other things. But let me talk about that for a second. We're going to actually cut into the grassy area in front of the front entrance there and create diagonal ADA parking. But as part of that, we're also going to make up the parking stalls that we have lost because there is residential parking, there's apartment building right across the street. So there will be no net loss of unrestricted parking, but we will be adding ADA parking. We're also going to be improving the, what's called the Clear Path of Travel into the front entrance on Thirty-seventh. We'll be adding an elevator to that building for ease of access to all floors in there. And also, we'll be doing some grading work on what I call the rear parking lot, where the solar panels are, so that the travel, the path of travel for disabled individuals meets all the grade requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act. And that concludes the capital portion. And when the presentation's complete, I'll be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Jim?
I need to get the clicker.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. So we have one more slide, and I was going to turn it over to Supervisor Groom, but I want to thank my staff and Supervisor Groom's leadership and her staff for this, the Children's Youth and Families Budget, which I think is an outstanding document, so.
Thanks, Mr. Sacco. I would like to show the, the cover of the fourth edition of the Children's Youth and Family Budget for San Mateo County. We started this a few years back when we began the Peninsula Partnership Leadership Council for Children and Their Families, which has morphed into the Big Lift and, and some other projects, but primarily the Big Lift. So it's, it's really important, I think, that the, the residents of our county know how important children are to, to this county and to its future. And so I just wanted to let you know that over not, two hundred and ninety-four million dollars is budgeted in fiscal sixteen seventeen for children. And that includes mental health services, school resource officer program, the Big Lift, San Mateo County Library Summer Learning, and CASA mentors for foster youth among, among the things. But I would just ask you to take a look at this. It's, I think it's, it is an impressive document that our staff, our budget analysts and Mr. Sacco have put together, along with help from all of the agencies that we contract with to, to serve children. And it's really a, it's really a very nice document, and I think it expands on some of the great work that we do in this county. So, thank you, Jim. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Supervisor Groom. Some of us may not have gotten a copy of that, that document. Is it-
Oh, this wasn't distributed?
I just got it.
I don't have it. I don't know. But I'll get it later. It's okay. Yeah, thank you.
We put them, we put them out on your, on your offices, so.
Yeah, maybe it's on my chair. Yeah, thank you. I got it. Okay, I got it.
It's also available in Budget Central.
Yeah, thanks. Well, I got it. Okay, very good.
Before questions, Mr. President, members of the board, I just want to thank Jim and his fine budget team, not only for the children's budget, which is an outstanding piece of work, but for the overall document and what they do through the course of the year to keep us on track financially like they do. A great job, and they have my appreciation.
Thank you, Mr. Sacco and team. Questions and comments?
I had a couple. So, Mr. Malba, you point out, and it's very exciting to read, you know, how much progress we're making in paying down our unfunded pension liability. And you know, this statement here, I think is pretty stunning, is that, you know, we will be paid off by 2023. And you go on to note that that will free up a hundred and six million dollars. So I mean, it, I mean, that's like another Measure A.
Correct.
I mean, just, just to keep in mind that, you know, it's funny, all of a sudden, 2023 seems a lot closer than it used to be. So anyway, I, I just, just to point that out. So when we talk about the increases in, in the net county expense, which is, I guess, is always kind of the, you know, area we need to focus, when we get to the slide here. A lot, a lot of that doesn't seem to be really programs, though, if I understand. You know, if I go back to your slide, Mr. Sacco, like we have the debt service for the, for Maple Street, that's twenty-five million. And then we have like the health mental pods.
Why don't I bring that slide up? Yeah.
I guess what I'm trying to get a handle at is, you know, the budget's always tricky because it's capital and operating are combined. And, you know, is there any concern that our, you know, that we're increasing our operating, you know, kind of ongoing expenses too, too much? Because I, I'm thinking maybe not, because it looks like there's, a lot of this is just really capital related.
Yeah. Actually, the, the ongoing adjustments are all things we anticipated. And if you look at the ongoing, one of the biggest one is the Maple Street debt service, and that's declining, starting in fiscal year eighteen nineteen, that's going to be declining over two million dollars a year. So you'll see that one drop pretty substantially.
Probably the best indication of what you're talking about, Mr. Pine, would be the, if you look at the employee account, which are obviously ongoing costs.
Yeah.
Those are, there are very few employees relative year to year being, being added. So that's a good indication. And my, my comments earlier of concern regarding fiscal expenditures were more directed to the one-off, one-time expenditures rather than ongoing.
Okay. Yeah, because, I mean, we've been fortunate to have a strong budget and to have the Measure A, and, but it's always been a little difficult to, you know, it seems substantially, most of our investments are fairly, are one-time. And, you know, we haven't really been increasing ongoing programs that will be here.
Yeah, I don't think we have a structural problem. It's more the, the amount of the one-time and the loans is bringing down the reserve to that ten percent level. And it could create cash flow issues down the road. So that's the bigger concern.
I think the one exception, that would be the road fund, where there is a more immediate structural problem.
But that's in the road fund where, you know, we have dedicated revenue that's just inadequate.
Good, correct. Yeah. And when you add to that capital expenditures, it clearly is not enough to support both.
Okay. Going back to the paydown of the, of the, of the retirement debt, and I can spend some more time with you offline on this, but in the, in the budget memo, if I read this right, we're anticipating a fourteen million dollar payment?
Actually, it's going to be twenty-three million, but it's fourteen, it was nine in the current year.
Oh, I see.
It'll increase fourteen million.
So it goes from nine plus fourteen, okay. I'll come talk- And I, I'll come talk to you to understand that better. So, okay, that's a big jump and that's why you're thinking you need to go take a look at, look at it.
Yeah, it's just, uh, what's going on is that, um, we're not able to lower, see, as you generate retirement savings, as the rate, as the statutory rate drops, you would hope that you would get lower net county costs from departments. And then you would use that decrease in that kind of cost to make the lump sum payment to SAMSSARA. And the thought was that they would be a wash. But the way the calculation works is that, um, it doesn't really take, it doesn't really take into account the, uh, the salary increases. So what, what happens is, is, is salaries go up and, uh, you know, and then the retirement goes up because of that, uh, you don't really get the, what ends up happening is the lump sum contribution to SAMSSARA is more than what you can lower the department's budgets by. So there's a gap there. So we just have to make sure we can get it under control because as we get, you know, right now, the, the blended rate is 38 and the statutory is at 32. But I'm thinking ahead, too, is when that statutory drops down to, you know, less than, you know, 20 or less than 30 and gets down in the mid twenties, I mean, that's going to be a huge lump sum contribution and I'm not sure we're going to be able to make it unless we figure that out.
Yeah, it wasn't really the intent. Okay. Um, I'm sure I'm missing something obvious here, but when we look at the Measure A sales tax allegation in, in fiscal 17, it's 117 million? Well, you know, in all the other years, it kind of trends up.
Reflects the fact that first years we didn't spend all the allocation and we appropriated, yeah.
Okay. Um, and another thing on Measure A, so in the memo, we note that, uh, we, we, we're, we're still setting aside 12 and a half million for, I guess, North County Health Services and is there any new planning or thinking about that currently?
Well, the major project that we're looking at in North County, um, is the South San Francisco Project where we have a very old antiquated, um, uh, facility that, uh, we, we need to update. It appears that the best site to do that is the South San Francisco Courthouse site. We are actively looking, uh, with the assistance of, um, architects at what, what might be possible on that site and will later this year bring back a proposal to the board as to what can be done. So that's the major thing that we're, we're looking at. There are also some other things, um, need to expand, um, some clinic presence in Daly City at the Nevin Center and, and elsewhere. There's a, there's also a, um, a, a youth, uh, health clinic up in, in the Daly City area that rents space from the city. So a number of those things are all involved in that, but the major one is the South San Francisco Clinic Site.
Okay. And then my last question is on a capital question. If you could help me understand the monies we've allocated for, um, the Maguire Facility. So, uh, in one part of the budget, we have Maguire Correctional Facility Renovation Phase Two, 5.8 million. And then, then later on, we have Old Maguire Facility Remodel, 8.3 million. And then we have another thing called Maguire Correctional Facility Improvements, 4 million. So that's for age 12. So that's, you know, 17, 18 million. So I'm not sure what that is.
Mr. Sacco can help me or, or, um, Mr., Mr. Porter, but, uh, most of those costs or almost all those costs are in the new Maguire Facility. And there are a variety of things, the, the decommissioning, the commission site, um, the, there's been an ongoing sewage problem and grinders and there's just, you know, it's a 25-year-old facility now and there are a number of updates that need to be made that, uh, to, to continue to make it usable.
Is the, is the mental health pod in there?
Uh, the mental health pod is part of the old correctional health pod, so that's a major piece of that. That's correct.
Part of it. Okay, I can pick that up with you offline.
Thank you. Supervisor Groom?
I just had a, I have a couple of questions. When Mr. Porter was talking about the, um, projects that have to be done on, on Alpine Road and he said that we were having difficulty getting permits, is there any way that, I mean, that just, time is money. And is there just any way that we can have other folks or help us or can we, I mean, are there emergency requests we can make, Jim? I mean, it just seems like.
Yeah, is it, is it the Water Resources, Water Resources Board?
Yeah, what, what agency is up, is holding us up? Is there anything that we can do to, to kind of expedite that or get some help?
Um, so at this point, all agencies are help, are holding us up. We've not received any permit, uh, permits from anybody. We, we're not getting returned phone calls. Uh, it is very frustrating working with these agencies and they turn over staff every six months. So the people that you worked with before are gone. Um, I'm working with Assistant County Manager Callagie to make direct contact with those agencies. Unfortunately, our experience with these agencies in the past is that, um, we are one of many permit requestees and, um, we have not had a lot of luck in, uh, forcing our projects through, but we can certainly make that effort again.
I mean, is there a way that our legislative delegation can help us? Is there a way that we can, uh, let the governor know that, um, I mean, he's, he's all about efficiency, so.
Certainly the state portion of the permitting, perhaps we could get help from the state on. Part of this is federal as well, the Corps of Engineers and the Federal Fish and Wildlife.
Okay.
And those are agencies that are not quite as responsive as we like.
Um, I mean, are, can our Congresswomen help us?
Potentially. It's certainly worth a try.
I just think we ought to do a full court press. I mean, this is costing us a lot of money and it's costing our constituents a lot of, um, especially the Alpine Road. Everybody's concerned that there are going to be more automobile accidents and so I, I think we should just do a full court press if we can.
Yeah, and, and just as a general statement, this is occurring on every project. Um, when we work up in Coleman Creek, uh, anywhere we work, the permitting processes are incredibly long and frustrating. And Supervisor Pine has experienced with San Franciscoito Creek, these agencies are very difficult to deal with.
Yeah, I would point out that, uh, it took us three years to get through the permitting process and it's, it's a problem all throughout the state and, and it's an area that's crying out for reform. It's, it's, it's ver, you know, virtually, um, everything is taking two or three times longer than it should.
It's, I mean, that's just absurd.
And, and in.
The state has a how many billion dollar surplus?
Well, it's both federal and state and.
I understand that, but, but, I mean, you know, we, we, we all try to practice fiscal responsibility where we can, but this is all, I mean, this is also a taxpayer issue. People pay a lot of money to state and federal taxes and expect something in return. And so I don't think we should have to wait three years to get projects done.
And in San Franciscoito, we did, uh, rely heavily on our congressional delegation and our state delegation and with that intervention, it was still three years, but, um, it's just crying out for reform.
It is. Okay. Um, I had another question, too. And on the Measure A, which has been about $80 million a year, have, we have not really exceeded that per year, have we?
No, no, except when we have taken reserves that we have not spent previous year, but our overall spending for the Measure A is right on track with the amount of resources. In fact, we're spending a little less on an ongoing basis, so.
Okay. And is this the time, is, is this the time that we can suggest a consideration of some additional dollars? Or, um, you know, we've been, we've been very good the last couple of years giving 5 million a year to, uh, the paratransit situation. And, um, I spent a fair amount of time with, um, Mr. Hartnett a couple of months ago talking about the paratransit because it's something that I get just a huge amount of complaints and I'm sure the rest of you do, too, uh, because it's a system that is overtaxed. It's the fastest growing transportation system in, in the, in the, um, in the SAMSSARA budget, far exceeding buses, far exceeding, um, um, uh, route, route changes and things like that. So I would, uh, and what's happening on the, in the paratransit is they're beginning to have to put three and four people per trip. And these are folks in wheelchairs and some with, with breathing, breathing apparatuses. And so it's taking two to three hours to get delivered where it usually should take less than more than 40 to 60 minutes. So I would like to suggest that we add an additional 5 million per year in our, in our next couple of budgets, just for paratransit, to see if we could get some, some more drivers, some more equipment and really expedite some of these rides. People that are in wheelchairs that are taking four hours to get to their trips, it's just not good for their health. So I would like to make that suggestion.
Thank you, Supervisor Groom. Supervisor Horsley.
Can I ask Mr. Porter to, uh, step up again, just, uh, because when we talked about the difficulty in getting, um, permits, now, as far as I know, I became immediately alarmed about thinking about Pescadero. Now, I, I was able to get to the district director, who apparently his family lives on the coast. And we do have a consultation letter and we also have this, I think it's a 160 report as well. So we did the consultation letter, the 30-day review period that's done and now we're on 135, I think it's 135-day review. So, uh, is, that's going okay? I just want to reassure us that, do I have to make contact with them again or is that, as far as you know, going all okay?
As far as I know, it's going okay. I'll check with my staff, uh, to see if there's a need for any additional intervention. Um, the permitting on that project's been going on for, it's close to a year now to get that dredging permit.
Well, I meant to just point out, we were able to get last year authorization from the Army Corps in emergency authorization, but at the same time, the state said that if we proceeded, we risked, uh, civil and criminal penalties. So we pulled back. And then when I went back to the Army Corps, they said, you have to start all over again. And so I was able to get to the district director. And again, I think because he had relatives who live on the coast side and staying on the coast side, he's aware of the problem and he did do the consultation letter, so. Unfortunately, he's transferred back into Southern California and I, I don't know who the district director is now, although as we could have, he seemed to be, he was pretty effective. Um, and they, they are kind of overburdened, so.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that's going okay.
So I, I can follow up with my staff and we can provide you an update with that. As far as I know, there's been no indications that we won't get our permits this summer and it's very important we get them this summer. As I recall, last year, one of the agencies authorized us to proceed in the middle of the winter time. And it's, it's just a bad time to excavate a hole in a creek.
I know that, in fact, our, our contractor refused to do, or declined, they didn't refuse, declined because he thought it just would not be a successful, uh, project.
Yes. But I will get back to you with that with an update.
Okay, the only comments I had, I did read online the Youth and Children Family Budget and the 2.94 million dollars and it was really well done. So congratulations to everybody who put that together and, uh, to Supervisor Groom, I know that's a really important project for you. I, I do have one, just, um, sort of a technical question, I guess. We, the Office of, of, of Sustainability seems to be kind of a catch-all and I know we've put, uh, some positions in there to continue to work on housing. And it's just, just a suggestion is that shouldn't those positions actually be in a Department of Housing? Just a suggestion, yeah, for, for you to think about. I, I don't know if, if that works out better or what, but it just seemed, I, I mean, I know they have to sit and there isn't any office space, I think, in the Department of Housing and they have to sit in the area for the Office of Sustainability, but it seems like it's more appropriate to be in Housing.
We could take a look at that. Um, there, there are some issues that we, um, that really, uh, started in the Office of Sustainability and they wanted to kind of keep that initiative together, but let us take a look at that and report back to you, um, uh, later on that, Mr., Mr. Horsley.
And I did, I, I was looking through all the department funding adjustments, just to help me understand this, and it does talk about budget adjustments have been made to reflect current costs. When it talks about decreases in retirement contributions and health benefit costs, is that, uh, it's, yeah, I didn't get, I was, didn't understand why it's a de, it's a decrease to the department? Is that because employees are paying a bigger share than they had in the past? I know that the, the amount that we pay roughly is about, or was 38%, then it went down to 37 because of the count, the employee share. Is that what that is referring to?
It's 32.4% actually.
Oh, 30, oh. Yeah. So we, when, when we have a savings from, uh, the retirement system, we reflect that in departmental budgets.
Yeah.
And then, uh, as, as Mr. Sacco explained earlier, uh, the, that's offset with increases that we take out of, of, uh, non-departmental, I guess, essentially. So the savings accrue to the department, um, as a former department head, I'm sure you would appreciate that.
That is great.
But the overall cost of the retirement to the county so that we pay down it early are being borne by the general fund and not the department.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I want to explain one thing about that, too, is that, um, we found, and we initially had this issue with the courts and then we talked to agency and some other departments and they would have the same problem is it, is that if you fund the blended rate at the higher 38%, which really isn't the statutory rate, those departments then have issues with claiming because the state, uh, especially with the courts, they said, well, it's not our responsibility to pay off the county's unfunded liability. So that's why we kind of keep the departments at the statutory rates of the departments are claiming what legally is the county's annual required contribution. And then the county, through the savings and the departments, makes the, the payments to SAMSSARA to pay down the unfunded, uh, the additional unfunded portion.
Thanks.
If I could just, uh, to respond to Supervisor Groom's comment on the paratransit, one issue that we have with SAMSSARA that has not been really addressed, um, despite some discussion, is as the board recalls, there is a outstanding issue between the federal government and those counties in our situation with respect to jet fuel tax at the airport. That's about a three and a half million dollar, uh, item for us. It hasn't been resolved. It's, it's hanging out there. We've had some initial discussions with SAMSSARA regarding potentially using some of our contribution for the BART pay down, which BART to the airport, we think clearly qualifies and frankly, we haven't gotten anywhere. And so before we contribute more money to SAMSSARA, I'd like to see that issue resolved, frankly.
Yeah, I was going to say, tell me that again. Could you explain that? Because I think Supervisor Tissia and I both serve on the SAMSSARA board and this is new to me.
Right. Well, the, the issue is that, that SAMSSARA has a commitment to pay down the debt service of BART to the airport. If some of the county's money that was going to SAMSSARA were directed specifically to pay down the debt service for BART to the airport, we feel that that makes a very good argument to the federal government that those jet fuel taxes that are in question are in fact being spent on the airport because they're being spent for a system that operates to the airport.
Okay. Right. And just, uh, so everyone is on the same page with regard to one of the fundamental, um, I guess, uh, principles, um, that John is speaking to. The federal government has clarified that all jet fuel tax proceeds have to be spent for aviation purposes. So that's, that's a challenge that we face.
Have to spend for what, Mr., Mr. Byers?
Well, it's pretty broad for, for aviation or airport purposes.
Yeah. You know, one thing perhaps we could do is, um, you know, maybe we, between now and the September revision, see if we could bring this to ground. And I also think it'd be helpful for me to, um, get an understanding about how the additional, you know, get a staff report on the additional 5 million, just, you know, how it would be spent. And, but, but it probably going to be hard to do that, all that between now and, um, next week.
I can tell you how it's spent. I mean, I'm, I'm happy to discuss this with you. Um, I, I mean, I can bring you statistics of, of, of ready wheels.
No, I'm, I'm sure that is, but it's a big expenditure and I think it'd be helpful to have a staff report to come along with it.
Supervisor Tissia?
Uh, just a couple of comments. I, I sort of agree with John and with this whole idea of, you know, utilizing our reserves and, you know, making sure this doesn't continue. One thing I'd like to see and it's, doesn't have to be in this, but maybe in the next month or so, one of the things, I never felt we got our arms completely around Measure A and what was going to be included in Measure A and what wasn't. And I still say that I think those library loans should be in Measure A, therefore, you know, keep it in that bubble so you know what's being spent there, so you're not spending even more Measure A money or general fund money for something. Um, because I think that will also help. Obviously, the E-RAF will help at the end of the year to find that out. But I do think it'd be helpful, and I think we do do some, you know, capital projects and things with Measure A, but I, I do, would say the initiatives that we've done really fit the bill for what we talked about and that's filling the gaps in services. And when you look at elder abuse prevention, services to older adults, the prevention, early intervention with at-risk children, we really have put a lot of money in the areas we really need to. But I think it'd be helpful to take a look at where we put the monies and outline where future monies, whether it's loans to cities or libraries and things, because I think those are things we wouldn't normally do, but we can. And I wouldn't want us to start using our general fund money continually for things like that, but Measure A really does, and it benefits those communities that voted for Measure A. But Measure A really, and it benefits those communities that voted for Measure A. So I just think it's too scattered to, well, I can't say you can fully understand it, but it's scattered, and I don't think it should be. So I'd like to see that looked at in the next couple of months to really get our arms on it. That's my comment.
Thank you, Supervisor Tissia. I had a couple of really easy potential items for add-backs, following on what Supervisor Groom said. And let me just go through the list. I don't have specific dollar amounts in mind, but perhaps through some analysis, we could arrive there. The first one is that I think we all received emails from NAMI. And I know we talked about that in the budget cycle. But I'd be interested to explore for this fiscal year, and if not, the next fiscal year, of looking to do something for NAMI since they do a lot of work in this county, I understand. So that's the first item. The second item is, in New York City, there was a study done that, on illegal evictions. And it showed that with an investment in legal services for folks that were being evicted, that it reduced evictions by some 40%. So I'm wondering if we could explore making an investment to the folks that do these kinds of legal services to try to slow the rate at which folks are being evicted illegally, perhaps.
In response to those two items, Mr. Solcom, the first item is really an increased request, as I understand it, from NAMI. And what we have told the other nonprofit organizations in the county is, as part of a two-year budget cycle, those need to be initiated at the beginning of the cycle, which of course begins next January for the next two years. With respect to evictions, we did increase the legal aids budget for that. And you may, will be more aware than I am, we're scheduled to receive the Housing Task Force report next week. That perhaps could be part of that. There may be some other costs. And probably in that context, it may be important to take a look at that issue.
Thank you. Yeah, I do understand about NAMI, but January is just around the corner, and maybe that work can begin. I do have a couple of more points. The next one is, we have a policy in the Parks Department for mini parks that we now, in North Fair Oaks, for instance, and I think on the coast also, we have these little urban mini parks where, in North Fair Oaks, there isn't land to do park expansion. But there's, there are a couple of little kind of pocket parks. So we have a policy that says now the county does support urban pocket parks. But I would like to explore additional funding to support that policy so that the county actually maintains and helps with the maintenance that's currently being done, as I understand it, by neighbors. And it's been going on for quite some time. So we just ask that we look at that funding policy question for mini parks throughout the county?
We certainly can. And it seems to me that we could bring that back in September. And probably, if you think of the nature of mini parks, part of that policy probably ought to be a consideration of really, should we be contracting with the city in which the mini park is located? City park forces are already set up to deal with those sorts of parks. And they may be better able and less costly than the county to maintain the mini type of parks. So we should probably take a look at that in conjunction.
Thank you. And the last item I have is, I don't mean to step on Mr. Church's shoes or Mr. Azari's shoes. But with the increase in vote by mail and the expected turnout in November, in my experience, we have ballot boxes at city halls throughout the county. And oftentimes, those ballot box, boxes become filled with ballots, and the election staff goes out and picks up the ballots and takes them to Tower Road. But there might be a reason with the increase of voting by mail and the turnout in November to have additional monies set aside for that department for some sort of enhanced ballot drop-off box at city halls.
We could work with that.
OK, thank you. That was the extent of my list. Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other comments, questions?
I'd just like to make one comment on the SAM-Trans and the paratransit. I do think, I'd like to see if we can get that resolved or at least talk it through by September. Because I think, the one thing I agree with Carol, because we've seen all the statistics, is the population is aging. We talked about this over and over again. And we're seeing a real uptick in people using paratransit. It's a very expensive ride, I get that. But at the same time, it's not going to get any easier. And then it's going to cut into all the other bus service we have. And the problems we have right now with bus service and train services, we're GM-packed, especially on our trains, so it could be a big issue.
One thing I didn't mention is, we had a lot of trouble getting disabled people to be able to vote this year because there aren't enough paratransit rides. And so that was a real issue.
Thank you. Other comments? We have one speaker slip on this matter, Martin Fox.
Good morning again, President Solcom and members of the board. Please help the persons and the family members of persons at risk of experiencing a mental health crisis avoid the incidence of crisis by making more treatment available. Real estate development is not treatment. That addresses the causes of a mental health crisis. The causes of a mental health crisis do not benefit from construction activities that elongates the process of recovery instead of accelerating the process of recovery. The causes of a mental health crisis do not benefit from operational activities that perpetuate treatment resistance and non-compliance. Measure A funds are better spent expanding the sheriff's department's psychiatric emergency response team that has proven to incentivize treatment compliance. And by being expanded, could make treatment available to the residents of county municipalities. Please help the persons and the family members of persons at risk of experiencing a mental health crisis by making more treatment available by expanding the sheriff's per team. Thank you.
I think we're at the point now where we need to adopt a resolution, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm just gonna move the resolution approving the 2016-17 recommended budget submitted by the county manager.
Check it.
Could we also add the $1.9 million for the purchase of Middlefield Road?
And the $1.9 million for Middlefield Road.
Second that, too.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sacco. Now, I understand we have a public hearing scheduled for 10:30, and we have to conduct that hearing at 10:30. So I'm going to suggest that we take a 10-minute break and reconvene at 10:30, if that's all right with everybody.
Yeah, dissipating will be a long, a long hearing or process.
OK. OK, we're going to start in just a minute here. We're on item number two, which is a 10:30 public hearing regarding the proposed financing of the Peninsula Clean Energy Program. And Mr. Silverman?
Good morning, members of the board, Mr. Byers, Mr. Malp, I am here this morning with Jim Agamire, who you know is the department head for the Office of Sustainability, and Janice Pepper, who I do not know all of you have met her. She is actually the new CEO of Peninsula Clean Energy. So I'd like to introduce them. I'm here this morning because, as I believe the board is aware, Peninsula Clean Energy is seeking to obtain a $12 million loan from Barclays Bank. And I think the natural question would be, well, what does that have to do with the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors? That's a very good question. In the process of obtaining that loan, Barclays requested that Peninsula Clean Energy obtain an opinion from outside counsel. And the purpose of the opinion is to establish that Peninsula Clean Energy has the authority of obtaining the loan. And so one of the bases for authority is a provision, and I would call it obscure because it's obscure to me, but an obscure provision of the Joint Exercise of Powers Act that requires a joint powers authority to have a public hearing prior to getting financing. And for reasons that, you know, frankly, are not terribly apparent from the legislation, it requires that the hearing be held by, and I quote, "a local agency that is not itself an authority within whose boundaries the money is to be spent." That would be the county of San Mateo. That's why we're here. This section and its, it's 6586.5 of the government code, which is a provision within the Joint Exercise of Powers Act. It requires a public hearing. It requires notice, which was published. And it requires that this board find a significant public benefit. There's a list of four things, it's in the memo, that are specifically designed as a, as a significant public benefit. It's the view of outside counsel. And just as some local color, outside counsel is actually Eric Taschmann, who many of you may know, serves on the SAM-SARA board. The opinion of outside counsel, and ours as well, is that the benefit that Peninsula Clean Energy should provide to the residents of San Mateo County in providing cleaner, more renewable, competitively priced energy to the residents of San Mateo County is a significant public benefit. So based on that, the board is being asked to make the finding. There's no fiscal effect on the county. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, but that is what the board is being asked to do.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? I don't have any speaker cards on this matter, but we need to open the public hearing.
Sure.
So we will, do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
I'll move to open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. So the public hearing is now open. And nobody is here to speak on the issue, so.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then finally, we need to adopt a resolution, making certain findings of significant public benefits in connection with proposed financing of the Peninsula Clean Energy Program by the Peninsula Clean Energy Authority.
I'll make motion to find a significant.
Find a significant benefits.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
I do want to take just a quick moment and acknowledge David Silverman's hard work on this over the last couple of weeks. David looks pretty calm and collected at the moment. But his last two weeks have been just chock full of surprises, trying to, trying to, the deal kept changing. And it's just been, it's just been one thing after another. And David's really worked hard to kind of keep it all together. And I'm actually afraid now that he's got this experience, he's going to move on to a Wall Street law firm and hopefully not leave my office. But it's been a fascinating ride, I know.
Thank you so much, sir. This experience, not that it was necessary, has disabused me of any notion I may have had that I'm, that I belong in the private sector. I think that I, I'm where I belong. But thank you, sir.
We're all better for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, I think we're adjourned until 1:30, service, employee service awards. But we have county manager's report and board reports.
Mr. President, members of the board, a few quick items in my report to let you know that Mr. Calagui, the Assistant County Manager, who is also a member of the statewide Commission on California Massage Therapy that regulates the industry, has testified before the legislature on the ordinance that the board adopted some time back regarding revocable regulation of massage parlor establishments and human trafficking. It's been, as the board knows, an unqualified success in the unincorporated area of this county. And Mr. Calagui's testimony to the legislature was that this is certainly a model ordinance that other cities and counties should consider adopting in order to, to control this element of human trafficking. The health system has received a grant from Blue Shield of California to assist those residents that are ineligible for health care under the Affordable Care Act to gain access to health care. It's a grant that we are in collaboration with San Francisco, Alameda, and Los Angeles counties. And we'll report back the results of that as we gain experience in streamlining our process to do this. Legislative update, and I suspect Mr. Pine will want to comment more on his recent trip leading a county delegation to Washington, DC to talk about issues of climate change and sea level rise, as well as connectivity. And finally, to report that on July 30th at Coyote Point Park, there will be a 5K fun run for employees, friends, and family as a way to promote health, wellness, and engagement. And if the board has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them if I can.
Thank you, Mr. Malp.
Are we all running?
Are we all running?
I am. I'm walking, yeah.
All right. And then we move on to board member reports. Why don't we start with Supervisor Groom? No report?
No report.
Thank you, President Solcom. I just wanted to commend the, there was a vigil that this LGBTQ Commission, and Supervisor Pine actually spoke, as well as Rich Gordon and Kevin Mullin. I just want to thank the Human Resources Department, as well as the Commission, and Donna Valencourt. It was really a beautiful ceremony. They did a really nice job. Stevie is, I don't know her last name, but she was the, I guess, the chair of the Commission. They did a really nice job, and it was really touching and well done. The others, I want to adjourn a memory of Carol Hartnett. She was a long time, she was a legal secretary in what used to be the DA's and county council's office. And when Bill Royer, who was a local Realtor, was elected to the Congress, she went to Washington, DC to be his secretary. He didn't last very long. The next election, Tom Lantos defeated him. But she stayed in Washington, DC, and she always made contact with her former friends in the DA, in county council's office, one of whom was my wife. And she's the cousin of, relative for Jim Hartnett, longtime city council member, and now the executive director of our Transportation Commission and Joint Powers Board and SAM-Trans, et cetera, et cetera. And also relative to, she was also a relative of two Bob and Don Hartnett, who are captains in the Sheriff's Department. And so it's a long, the family has a long history in San Mateo County. And she leaves behind a son and two grandchildren who just adored her.
Supervisor Tissia?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to adjourn a memory of two individuals. The first one is Linda Gallion. She was a resident of Daly City for more than 40 years. She was the Citizen of the Year in Daly City in 2013. She's a member of our Daly City Library Board of Trustees since 2007. Very big into libraries, promoted the summer reading programs, did commercials to the, in Daly City to promote our libraries. She did book donations to the Filipino, Filipino cultural books at the ceremony library. She was a board member of the Daly City Queson City Sister City Committee, member of our History Guild. And she was the City of Daly City's Women of Excellence in 2012. And she was the current president of the Filipino Bayanan Resource Center in San Mateo County. So she played a very big role in our community for many, many years. So I would like to adjourn in her memory. She will be sorely missed in Daly City. Second is Howard Mason. He was a lifelong Californian. He died at the age of 83 on May 28th. He grew up in Glendale, California. He also attended Beverly Hills High School, joined the US Army as part of the Signal Corps. He had a degree in business from Menlo College in 1957, and attended Golden Gate University to prepare for his CPA exam. He was married to Catherine Dewey, and they moved to Belmont in 1960 to raise their family. He was also very actively involved in the bond measure that purchased Twin Pines Park in 1972. It was part of the Belmont Finance Commission from 1978 to 1995. He was also, after that, elected to be the Belmont City Treasurer, and he served there for two terms. And he was a wonderful, wonderful individual, and our sympathy goes out to his family. Just a couple of quick announcements. First off, I'd like to thank all that have participated in disaster preparedness day, the Sheriff's Department, OES, and all the fire, police, fire, you name it, were there. And I really appreciate the great work they did. We had a beautiful day. It was nice and sunny. And we had thousands of families come through, so it was very well attended. The other thing I'd like to mention is, for those of you who haven't done this yet, the upcoming Age Well Drive Smart, Pacifica, June 23rd, San Carlos, August 23rd, Foster City, September 29th. And one last announcement, Seniors on the Move, Tuesday, October 25th, at the Event Center.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Pine?
First, I wanted to echo Supervisor Horsley's thanks to Donna Valencourt for a tremendous job putting together the vigil. And just a couple of other notes on this trip I took to Washington, DC with a few folks. The primary objective was really on the water-related issues. So we had some really good meetings with FEMA and Army Corps. And when you look at our county to the south, and you see the kind of money they bring into their county from those entities, it's really quite impressive. But it's a complicated process, and it's kind of a real multi-year dance you have to do with these agencies. So this was really a start of that. In addition, Benny from IT had some productive meetings on some broadband issues. We happened to have a chance to meet with the Congresswoman who is front and center on this jet tack, jet tax issue that we mentioned earlier. And she's doing her best to try to fix it in the federal aviation legislation, although one wonders what will ever happen. one wonders what will ever happen in DC these days, but it was fortuitous we could meet with her. And we also brought to the attention of the Department of Energy all our good work on community choice energy, which they were very enthusiastic about. They had a big group of like 15 people who wanted to hear about it. And then we saw our local delegation, including Senator Feinstein, met with us. So that was a nice bonus. So it was productive.
Thank you. Any other business? For the good of the order, we will stand adjourned.